...cast over to Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the members. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the Board Secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, and David Blatt. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will then have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, and the board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have while -- on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. If you would like to speak, please come to -- forward to the mic and give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberations. There are required findings for a special permit, and the findings are that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow, congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons; that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or amenities of the neighborhood; that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use; and four, that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amongst clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, zoning board of appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Carl Flinkstrom, 3 Mays Field Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby date of application is follows. Applying for a special permit to expand Lunenburg Veterinary Hospital's operations to include 111 Massachusetts Avenue. We are currently at 109 Massachusetts Avenue. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Sections 4, 1, and 5. The street address is 111 Massachusetts Avenue, assessment map 76, parcel 46. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the law which is subject to this case is Bremen Handyman and Remodeling, Inc., 274 Union Street in Asheville, Mass., Mauricio Bremerman. And the deed is recorded in the listed on the district registry, D., section 9062, page 10, and recorded April 30, 2018. The special permit questions are as follows, and the answers. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply was no. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply was no. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply is yes. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amongst clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply was no. And that is signed February 12, 2019, by Carl Flinkstrom, 3 Mays Field Road in Lunenburg. A copy of the deed from Robert Maloney to Bremen Handyman and Remodeling dated 4/30/2018 is attached. There is a -- assessors' map showing the abutting properties. A copy of the field card from the assessors' office. And there is a letter to Dr. Flinkstrom from Mauricio Jose Bremerman, President. This will confirm that Bremen Handyman and Remodeling, Inc., hereby authorize you to take all steps required to obtain a permit from the town of Lunenburg due to operate a veterinary practice of property owned by us at 111 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg. This will further confirm that we have entered into a purchase and sale agreement to sell 111 Massachusetts Avenue to you. Thank you very much, very true newest, Bremen Handyman and Remodeling, Inc., Mauricio Jose Bremerman. There is a list of buttes attached, which were all notified two weeks prior to this meeting, and a letter from the building commission dated February 19, 2019, from Commissioner Gary Rhodes. I have reviewed the application and have the following comments. Property historically has been used as a single-family residence. The property is zone commercial in the front and Residence A in the rear. They are proposing to convert the property to a veterinary hospital as provided in the protective bylaw of the town of Lunenburg, Section 250-41N5. The bylaw provides that a special permit be issued by the zoning board of appeals. The application lacks plans. I need plans to be helpful to the board to reach a decision. The applicant will also require a second approval from the planning board if approved by the board. And there is a sketch of the existing property and those proposed. Tonight, the applicant has brought in and actually emailed today a more substantial site plan, and he provided more substantial building plans to me this afternoon. I have some comments from other town boards. The sewer commission on February 15 said, "There are no attached files," though it notes three files. "We would need to see engineered drawings with current condition and proposed detail to understand the expansion of sewer plans." Dr. Flinkstrom replied February 15, "City sewer was installed circa 1988 when the service came down Mass Ave as Walmart was being built. My plan is to make no changes to the sewer system. I am preparing some sketches so everyone will understand what I have in mind. I've been trying to contact Jamie Rowe of Whitman &amp; Bingham to get some assistance with drawings. I left another message with his office this morning, and I'm expecting a call this afternoon." Samantha Tucker from the DPW said they would need a conceptual engineered plan. The reply was the same. He has a meeting scheduled with Jamie Rowe, and that was on February 22, and the conceptual engineer plan will follow, which we have received. The planning board review. The project is a change of use from a residential to a veterinary hospital. The use of veterinary hospital also requires a special permit. For both of these reasons, the applicant will be required to file a site plan review with the planning board should the special permit be approved. Fire chief Patrick Sullivan. The fire department will need more detailed information on the project. Is this involving adding or replacing existing structures on the site? I do not see any documentation or site plan attached. The reply by Dr. Flinkstrom was, "I plan on adding a handicap access to the east side of the building. It will start near the northeast corner and go up to the southeast corner and onto the existing deck in the front of the building. Inside the building on the first floor is an open concept, and I plan on adding some petitions to create separate spaces to serve various functions. I will submit sketches of the floor plan before and after the proposed changes." And the fire department replied, "Very good. Thanks." Fire department approves. Any specific issues related to the interior will be addressed through building permit process. The water department asked for a survey for crossconnections, and additional backflow devices will be required and installed. Dr. Flinkstrom replied, "Please let me know if access to the interior is needed so I can arrange with Mr. Bremerman, the owner." Thank you, Dr. Flinkstrom. The conservation commission review required more detailed information and would like a permit to walk the property. The permission was granted on February 8 by Mauricio Bremerman, President of Bremen Handyman and Remodeling, the owner of the property, and any questions can be directed to the applicant. Signed, Carl Flinkstrom. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to come forward and speak to if you can add anything or -- well, question while you're at the mic.
Okay, yeah. I'm Carl Flinkstrom, 3 Mays Field Road, Lunenburg. So, I've been practicing veterinary medicine in Lunenburg for 35 years. I started in 1983 doing house calls and office visits at my home at 111 Mass Ave, the property in question. I did house calls and office visits on that property for four and a half years, and then we started practice in the building that my father built on 109 Mass Ave, which was our front yard, but it was divided off. And, yeah, so from 1988 until present, we've been practicing in that building, which was really designed as a one-doctor facility. And because the practice grew very popular and I needed to hire more doctors, we're currently a three-doctor practice working in a two-exam-room facility. And it's very busy and it's very crowded, so we found it necessary to either add on or find a new space. And I've already looked at a couple of properties in Lunenburg that didn't work out. I want to stay in Lunenburg. I love Lunenburg. I raised my kids in Lunenburg, and I love my clients, and I want to be able to grow my practice right here in Lunenburg. And it -- when the opportunity came up to purchase this property, I thought it would be a great idea to do that. And what I want to do is I want to move my surgery and dentistry and stem cell therapy and plate-rich plasma treatments and imaging to that building so that if you're bringing your pet for one of those procedures, you would go to 111 Mass Ave. And if you're coming in for an outpatient medical visit, you would go to the present building. And that's going to make it a lot easier for our staff, and it's going to really make it much better client experience and better for our patients if we had more space to do this practice.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so you're going to operate in both. One will be more like specialized? Is that what you're saying? 111 will be more specialized and 109 will be?
We're going to be doing the same things that we are in this -- in the current building, only we're going to be separating the surgery, dentistry, and other procedures that usually done in the -- either the surgery room or the treatment room. 111 Mass Ave is going to be that area. And regular appointments like office visit appointments and hospitalized patients would remain at 109 present building.
Okay, so you've really -- what I think you're saying is you're a one-man practice. You're now three. You've currently outgrown the facility you're in. You're looking for the solution, which happens to be the 111, which is very convenient because it's right next door.
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, I'd just like to open it up to the members of the board, if you guys have any questions.
Relative to the pool that's in front of the residence, do you plan on removing that eventually to make it a parking lot or something?
What I want to do is I want to have the gates locked, and I want to have private -- a sign that says "private" on the gate. There are three ways to get into the pool area. One is from the west side, and the other gate's on the east side, and the other one is from the deck in front of the house. And we can have a gate on each one of those with a sign that says "private" so that the clients or anyone else would understand that it's not part of the -- of the practice.
Yeah. So, there's no plan to remove it to just make it convenient, more convenient, to go from one building to the other, direct access or anything like that?
When I lived in that building, I designed and built or had that pool built, and it's an in-ground pool that has concrete sides.
Okay.
It's just like a house foundation, and they -- when they built it, they told me it would last 100 years.
Mm-hmm.
And it's lasted over 20 years, and they just replaced the pool liner, and they said that there were absolutely no cracks or any -- it's still good.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so hopefully, if you can occupy 109, how many employees are you going to have there?
Oh, the new place, 111?
Oh, I'm sorry, 111, rather. Yes.
I would be doing surgery and dentistry there with the help of two assistants.
Okay. Plus, there's going to be the reception staff and any other bookkeepers or office help?
We'd have a reception area, but my two assistants would be admitting the patients and releasing the patients that are there for a procedure. So, it's just me and a technician and a technician assistant.
Okay, so roughly three is in that building?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how much parking you have up there?
There are five spaces. There's a garage that has -- it's a two-bay garage, and then there's a fairly large area behind the house that can park several cars. So, we could put five cars there, the way it is now, and still have a turnaround and a place for, let's say, a UPS truck to come up and make a delivery, turnaround, leave safely.
So, in essence, does that leave two free parking spots? Because the three of you, they assume, all drive to work, you and your two assistants.
That would leave two parking spots for clients when they -- and we would have them -- we would stagger them so that when the clients, you know, they come in by appointment to leave their animal for a procedure, and those would be 20 to 30 minutes apart, and same when they're picking them up. It's an actual appointment with the doctor or a technician. So, the people coming in and out, they wouldn't be bottlenecked.
Any of the animals undergoing procedures at your proposed facility be staying overnight for recovery or anything like that?
Most of my patients go home the same day. If they're stable and they need to stay overnight, either one of the -- either 111 or 109 would have the capability of keeping them, but the Massachusetts State Board of Registration in Veterinary Medicine requires that the owner be informed either verbally or with a sign that no one is present at the facility overnight. So, if they do leave their pet, they would realize that the pet is unattended overnight. That happens very rarely these days with the number of 24/7 facilities that are available nearby.
Okay. And when, you know, your patients are delivered to the facility, is it just out of a vehicle inside the building and not outside, causing any noise or barking or anything like that that could potentially disturb neighbors?
It would be very similar to what's happening at 109 right now. Person drives up, they get out of their car, they bring their patient, their pet, into the building, and then when they're done, they go back out to their car and drive off. So, there wouldn't be noise or odors.
Okay, unlike a kennel perhaps. That's not what we're talking about here.
No, we're not talking about--
Talking about a surgical facility and--
-- like having animals outside or for any length of time, unattended, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Thank you. David?
So, could you -- do you have an estimate of the distance from what your proposed customer entrance to the fence around the pool will be or is?
Um--
Because that's not mentioned here. You don't have any numbers.
Okay. The customers would park at the top of the driveway.
Right.
And they -- with the proposed ramp on the side of the building, it's about 30, 35, 30 to 35 feet to that gate that would, you know, be locked. But the gate that enters the pool area is about 35 feet from where they would enter the ramp to get to the deck on, you know, the client entrance.
Okay, so it's -- I'm a little confused because in the plans that you have and you propose--
Yeah, there's a--
-- show a cust -- and in the plans you have, you have a customer entrance right by the pool fence.
That's where the actual door is entering the building from the deck. The drawing that you have doesn't have a -- it doesn't have the deck on the drawing. It says a concrete pad, but between the house and the pool, there is a deck. It's a raised deck. It's brand-new. Mr. Bremerman just built that. And the proposed handicap access ramp would run from the back of the building to the front of the building on that side, the same side as the driveway.
Okay.
The building's 26 or about 30, 31 feet long from front to back on that side.
Mm-hmm.
And then the entrance to the pool is about 20 feet from the front of the building, so probably 50 feet then, now that I think of it.
Now, because based on the dimensions in this thing, it looks like it's maybe 10 feet, if not less, from the front of the building, 111, to the gate, to the vinyl fence around the pool. It actually looks like it's even less than that. I would say closer to--
Oh, okay. The deck in the front of the building is all fenced, so it would be impossible to enter the pool area from the deck as long as the gate is locked. And it would have a pad lock so that no one -- no one who doesn't have permission or access to the pool area would be able to get in there.
Is there any proposed, like, as far as security, like, kind of cameras or anything like that? It's, you know, that is a concern, is that you want to keep this pool area. You want to keep this fence, which is very close, and basically, you're creating a blind spot for -- if somebody wanted to get into that pool area. Because you don't have, you know, it's going to be a vinyl fence that I assume is not see-through, or is it see-through? I haven't had a chance to really observe the fence up by the front of 111's entrance.
It's a privacy fence.
Right.
The only way you can see through it is if you walk right up to it and you peep through the really tiny half-inch crack.
So, that's what I'm saying. So, that's what I'm saying, is my concern is, is that you have created an area near the customer entrance for -- that is a blind spot for after-hours or when the -- when the vet -- when the hospital's not in use. So, it's a concern -- it's a safety concern that I'm having, asking you about. Is there any plans for, like, security cameras or anything else in that area--
Yes.
-- to prevent somebody from being in the wrong spot at the wrong time?
Yes, I have security cameras presently at 109, and I plan on installing them at 111 as well.
Okay.
And I use Vivint, and those cameras record any -- they'll start recording if there's any movement, and it goes straight to my cellphone, and I'm alerted if there's anything there.
If I may, David?
Yeah.
The deck's elevated, correct?
The deck is elevated.
You're coming from the back, you're going up and then climb to an elevated deck--
Yes.
-- that if you stood on, you could probably look right into the pool from--
You can see the pool from the deck.
Right, right.
Yes.
So, it's not a ground level?
No, I understand that.
He's upper level, okay.
Right.
That's where the customer entrance is.
Right, but if I'm standing at the customer entrance--
Yeah.
-- and you're standing at the street, and I'm about to go into the pool area over the fence, basically, you couldn't see me at all.
Well, if you're out in the deck, you can see.
Yeah, but you're not. The -- because, hey, I'm looking at it as it's--
I want to see if you realized it was an elevator.
No, no, I definitely understand because otherwise, we wouldn't have to have a ramp at all.
Right.
So, I understand that. So, I guess my biggest concern is with the customer entrance where it is. Is there any possibility of, since the building is roughly square, of having the customer entrance in a different area? Would you consider that? Because I'd rather see that -- I'd rather see it where that, you know, that basically, you're asking us to keep a pool in a -- and you're asking this to be changed to commercial, and you're asking for a pool -- a residential pool to be left in a commercial business area type of thing without as much supervi -- you know, without the same restrictions that I would have if it was in my residential pool type of thing. Does that make any sense, or did I just talk in circles?
Square.
Square.
I'm trying to answer the question if the entrance could be elsewhere. I haven't thought of that.
Okay. So, I'd be looking if it was even, you have, like, an employee entrance in the back if there was a way of rearranging so that the employee entrance would be this way right from the parking lot. I'm taking my patient right from the parking lot right into the unit, not bringing them all the way down and around to the front. Because I am concerned, as my colleague mentioned, about the ability that you only have two parking spots up there. That's after the -- well, two for patients, not employees.
In the drawing that my civil engineer did for me, we do have proposed additional parking.
But he has -- he's put in five spots, one handicap spot and then four additional spots. So, if you had three employees or three people parked in three of those spots, you're allowed one patient, and then the other one, unless that patient's handicapped, has no place to park.
The drawing showing the proposed parking is in addition to the existing parking spaces.
So, where are the existing parking spaces?
Behind the building.
Okay. That's the -- he didn't show that.
The garage in the shed area is where you would park.
Yes.
So, you would have parking in front of the garage, correct? Would it be--
Either in front of the garage or in the garage, and then the other parking spots are herringbone-type looking, driving in towards the retaining wall.
Okay, so towards the block wall?
Yes.
Right here. And then angled in.
Would you like us to help you?
Thank you.
And how many -- would there be three spaces there between the garage and the block -- the retaining wall for your employees?
There's about 40 feet of parking space, which is more than enough for three cars to park diagonally.
Mm-hmm.
And then in front of the garage, there are additional two spaces.
Two spaces.
Or we could actually pull right into the garage.
So, you could have your employee parking in that area and leave these spaces for your patients?
Yes.
Okay. That helps a lot. That clarification helps a lot.
Okay. Any other questions?
Wouldn't the parking spots be the jurisdiction of the planning board on their site plan review?
They will, they will. But of course, we have to, you know, address all of this. And of course, the building, the 111, is part commercial and part residential. It's kind of like split between the line, but it's an estimate anyway or approximate. So, now it'll be strictly a commercial business.
Yes.
Okay.
Hours of operation would be the same as what the office at 109? Is that what you're proposing or something different?
I currently do surgeries Monday through Thursday during the day, and then I have appointments at night, three nights a week. And the other doctors work five days a week. We're open nine to nine, Monday through Thursday, and Fridays we're open nine to five. I wouldn't initially be adding any hours to those, but for the purposes of applying for the special permit, we would appreciate it if, for future, we would be able to be open on weekends or nights. If in the future, we decided that we needed 24/7 emergency care in Lunenburg, the building would have the facilities to do it, and the only thing that would stop us was -- would be if we didn't have that permission with the special permit. So, I would ask for that, but our current hours are on weekdays right now.
Okay.
So, how would we put something like that in?
I think the -- a lot of-- I think, I think the, uh, a lot of this will be addressed by the planning board.
Planning board?
Correct.
Okay. But at least it...
Yeah.
It's been addressed here so that you carry it forward to...
And that makes sense, that you would have to do emergency surgeries on weekends. Things happen on weekends. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I'm all set.
I'm good.
Okay. Um, we do have a public comment period, so I would ask anybody that would like to come up, if they want to speak, in favor or opposition, or whatever they would like to say, just please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and say what you would like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Johnston, five Richards Way. Got a letter, so I'm assuming we're abutters or close enough to be concerned. Um, there's certainly no noise or any issues with the current building or business. Doesn't sound like there would be any issues with the addition of a new building. And in fact, I'm kind of glad that he was able to find a way to stay in Lunenburg with his practice, so, you know, I kind of hope that any issues can be worked out and he can go ahead with the new business, so.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, hearing none. I will cut off public discussion. And I will bring it back to the board. Do we have any more discussion?
I don't have any other questions or comments, so this is going to be referred to the planning board, so... So I'll make a motion, if no one has any other comments or questions. I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit, um, as per the application, um, in referral to the, um, planning board.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. The special permit is granted. I do have a little bit more reading. Okay, the special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and this special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you luck, and congratulations, your business is growing.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
You can just take...
Yeah, we got a bunch of readings to do before, so... Do you want these back by any chance? We don't need them anymore. You could have them.
You're gonna, if you're, you're gonna need them for the planning board.
Right.
So I don't know if you have plenty of copies, but you need to keep one, right?
Save a few trees.
No problem.
Okay, it's seven-thirty-five, so we'll go right into the next hearing. Again, uh, we have some new faces. I have to, uh, tell you, first welcome to the zoning board of appeals. I'll tell you how the hearing will proceed. I have to give you a notification first. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the members. To my left is Lisa Normandin, Board Secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is James Bedzekowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, and David Blatt. Uh, the way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted, uh, communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and the board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will go into deliberation, and this is for a special permit to vary dimensional requirements. So the findings for that are, the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Bill Tapley, one-forty-six Lancaster Ave., Lunenburg. Under sign hereby petitions as follows. Building in addition, size of thirty-one point six by thirty-one feet to expand living space of existing home. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section two-fifty dash five-point-two E-A-one-A and Section two-fifty-five-point-three A-two. Street address of the property is one-forty-six Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. Assesses map seventy-one, parcel twenty-nine. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is William C. Tapley and Bevan M. Tapley of one-forty-six Lancaster Ave., Lunenburg, and the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book seven-four-seven-two, page thirty-nine, and recorded March twenty-second, two thousand and twelve. The special permit criteria questions are as follows, and answers are as follows. A, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, the proposed use of the property is the same as the existing use. Proposed action will not be any danger to the surrounding area. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The proposed addition has been designed to maintain the same integrity of the existing dwelling and will be visually pleasing, as is the existing house. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply, the proposed action complements the existing dwelling and will be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the surrounding dwellings. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply, the proposed action will not disturb any of the surroundings and will be conducted in a manner as such having no detrimental impact on anything. That is signed on February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen by William C. Tapley of one-forty-six Lancaster Avenue in Lunenburg. Building Commissioner Rhodes has attached a memo to the zoning board dated February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. I have reviewed the application, have the following comments. The property is currently used as a single-family dwelling. The property is located in the Residence A zoning district, which requires a fifteen-foot side yard setback. The proposal is to construct an addition located at the closest point one-point-three feet. They will need a special permit under Section two-fifty dash five-point-two E-one-A before it can be constructed. In addition, they will need a special permit under Section two-fifty-five-point-three A-two. The height of structures is limited to the distance of the posed side yard, one-point-three feet plus five feet. In this case, the allowed height would be six-point-three feet. The proposal is to construct the building nineteen feet. Excuse me. I caution the applicant that they may need approval of the abutto to stage the construction. Plans would also need to be revised because the Mass State Building Code would require the exterior walls facing the property line to be fire-rated. Excuse me. There's a list of abutters, a site plan, building plans, and you have large building plans there. The Board of Health has said that the septic system would need to be, well, the home would be, need to be attached to municipal sewer. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
With that, I would like to invite the applicant, if they would like to come up and speak to the petition.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
I'm Bill Tapley, as stated, my wife Bevan Tapley, one-forty-six Lancaster Ave., Lunenburg. You see the plans I submitted, my intention for the addition. I guess to give you a little background on myself, what I'm looking to do. I purchased the home in two thousand and ten from my grandmother. My grandmother and grandfather built the home in nineteen fifty-five. I spent a lot of time there growing up as a, as a kid. We, when we purchased the home, we demoed it. I put on a second floor, adding bedrooms. The existing septic system that was there is a three-bedroom system, which I was limited to. We now have three children, we're a family of five. For me to do any type of addition to the home, I would need to tie into town sewer, which I've already gone through, the sewer commission, done the engineered plans, got approved, that is all in place. So we've kind of finagled the plans, worked them many different ways. Where the proposed addition lies is, is very close to my neighbor's line. The reason it can't go in the middle or on the other side of the house is the elevation of the upstairs bedroom windows, which would be blocked by the roofline of the addition, and also where the septic tank exists in my three-bedroom system. The way our plan is drawn up for tying into the sewer, we use the existing tank, gravity feed into it, E-one pump, and then mull under Lancaster Ave. and tie in on the north side of Rolling Acres, as opposed to the other side of the house, which would be very difficult. So I guess that's...
Okay. Okay. All right. I will tell you, one-point-three is very close. It's closer than I can remember, and I've been on the board a long time for anybody to a property line. Also, I think, is the building inspector stated under the Mass Codes, you would actually, because you're within five feet of a property line, and it goes by the property line, not structures, that that whole wall would have to be a firewall?
Right, yeah.
Which, you know, would be a lot more cost. I think you're probably aware of that.
I am. I'm, also, I'm in, I'm in the building industry as well. The addition we did, I contracted and did myself. I mean, we've been in Lunenburg a long time. My wife grew up in Lunenburg, danced in the guild. My grandmother taught school here for over thirty-five years. My wife's a schoolteacher. As I said, our three children are in the school system. Just want to find a way to make this work.
Okay.
You know, staying in the home we're in, in the town we're in. So I'll let you go back to...
Okay, thank you. I'll open up to the board.
I, I had a chance to look at the plans that you were proposing. It looks like a, you know, an in-law or a, you know, basically like a second home or an in-law hole. Is, you know, you mentioned this is for, for the family.
Right. So I definitely, if you want to still...
No, that's, I just want the explanation as to...
Sure, so...
Whether this is an in-law apartment, or if this is an apartment, or if this is a addition to the house.
So tying into the town sewer system is a substantial cost. It's going to run me north of twenty-five thousand dollars, almost thirty thousand dollars to do this.
Okay.
If I'm going to add to my home, living space, I want to be able to have as much opportunity for household things that I can use. I don't want to, to justify the cost of, of tying into the sewer for one bedroom or a, a, a living room, to me, isn't justifiable. I want to have this space as a full living space. My son's a sophomore at Lunenburg, I'm going to be a junior. We're looking at college in two years. There's a good chance he could stay local. It would be a great fit, more space in the house for him. We have a large local family. We have, I have eight nieces and nephews that are all within a four-mile radius. We all get together on weekends, we host family holidays, we host Thanksgiving every year, they sleep over, my kids have friends. I want to utilize this space. I want it to be as much to use as, as I can make it. And being in the industry and in the building, um, the building industry, a lot of this work I'm going to do myself, so cost-wise, as you know, when you build from scratch, it's not as, it's a lot more efficient to do from the beginning as opposed to later on. And also, you know, forecasting years ahead. We get older, the kids come back, there's, there's more space for multi-functions for everyone in the family.
However, I'm trying to understand, you mentioned that right now, is right now the home's a three-bedroom?
Correct.
Right. And your septic is for a three-bedroom?
Right. I don't have enough space to do a four-bedroom system to expand.
I, I understand that, but that's what I'm, that's why I'm, I'm asking. It seems strange that, I'm just trying to understand that we're building a apartment for a high school student right now?
Not necessarily. I'm not, and, and this isn't something that's going to be done in thirty, forty-five days. You know, as I said, doing most of the work myself, it's going to take time, and college is, for him, twenty-four months away, not that far.
Right. No, I, I understand that, but it's a student in college right now. I understand, I understand what goes on with that. It's, to me, I'm just trying to understand, you know, you men, you're mentioning this, and I'm just trying to, to better understand the reasoning behind what, you know, what we're doing. To me, it looks like I'm trying to grant you hardship to create a in-law apartment, an in-law unit on this thing. So actually create, changing this from a standard single-family to something other than that in this district. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, that's, that's what I'm looking at, at this, at these plans. So I'm, that's, that's, in fact, that's what I see in the plans, is this is a investment
I mean...
In the home.
My dad is, just turned sixty-eight. My in-laws are almost seventy. My in-laws are almost seventy. Years down the road, is it something that if they were to take ill or need care?
Okay. So just that, when I was looking through the bylaws to, there is different requirements, you know, right now the lot, the, the size of the lot is a, is smaller than, you know, than that district. And basically, it's telling, if I look through the bylaws, it talks about the fact that if it's becomes a two, more than a single-family, it needs a larger lot. So I'm just trying to understand, Ms. Chairman, I'm trying to understand whether this is, you know, what, what we're granting is for both an in-law, you know, to make it a, a, change it from a single-family use to this house, or whether it's just a, adding an addition to the house. And to me, it's sounding like we're changing it from a single-family use right now, and if that's something different than what this permit is asking for.
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, that, that's, I guess, my question for the, for the board here a little bit is that, am I incorrect in my thinking?
I had exactly the same thing, and that was what I was going to start off with, asking, Billy, if this was, the intent was to have a in-law apartment or something like that. And with that in mind, I look at it and see that the structure itself is almost like an oversized ranch addition, but in that respect, to make it more palatable and less encroachment on someone else's property, if you change the size from, say, thirty-one something by thirty-one square, cut it down to about a twenty-four by thirty-six, you can accomplish the same thing, you still get the same number of rooms, you still get all the same effects, you cut down the need for a side yard from one point three to maybe seven or eight feet, and accomplish exactly the same thing, looking at it, so there's not as much need for relief for special permits. And then, as, it was stated earlier, do we need to rethink whether or not the intent of what you're asking for should be approached as an in-law apartment type of thing or something like that? Because you've got a kitchen and a master bedroom in one place, and you're looking to do that. And it's very unusual to have two kitchens in one house, unless it's a manor.
And I guess my rebuttal to that is, like I said, spending almost thirty thousand dollars to tie into the system, where I build things myself...
Right.
To me, building a kitchen is easy, cost-effective, room, cost-effective. If I'm going to build this, I want...
But it changes, it changes the nature.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, yeah, you could build a kitchen. I mean, I'm sure lots of people could build another kitchen in their house if they wanted to.
Yeah, I'm sure, I know many people that have finished basements that have the kitchen and bathroom.
But it changes the nature, because what they're saying is it does make it either like an in-law apartment or accessory housing, you know, it's, it's where you have the kitchen, the bedroom, the living room. So I can, you can understand where the board's coming from.
Yeah. As you said, something, you know, like another kitchen. I have a stove and refrigerator and stuff and, and sink in the ba, in the cellar.
Right.
In addition to what we have in the main house, but it is not with a living room, fireplace, master bedroom, and bath, all in the same, which makes it into an apartment, per se. It's an accessory type of situation. So...
In, in fact, based, looking at the plans, it, there, it, it doesn't give us any indication that it's not an addition, I'm sorry, an in-law apartment, because there's really no simple egress from one side to the others. It's not, it wasn't set up as something that somebody's going to naturally walk from one area to other. You actually show it as there's closed doors on both sides.
Through my existing mudroom and into the laundry room.
Through the laundry room that you have, you're showing closed doors, so therefore it's set up and leads everybody to understand that it's a separate unit, not part of your existing building. So there is, to me, that's a, a different permit that you're looking for than what you're coming here for just a relief. So I'm, it's, that's, so we're looking for different, creative ways to make sure that one point five feet and what you're asking for could be accomplished.
I mean, I, one point five is very close. You had mentioned tweaking the, the layout. Am I right in assuming there's no setbacks going, issues pushing the, towards the back?
Well, that's what I was wondering, you could go hard ground on the back.
Yeah, but you've got a lot of land back there. See, even, even if you, you know, just, just looking at it quick, the, the existing garage, I'm not sure, but I'm going to guess it's about thirteen feet from the, from the, the property line.
Actually, it's thirteen feet, two inches at its, at its smallest point.
Okay. Thirteen feet, two inches. So if you brought that straight back...
So that's already, that's already within the fifteen?
That doesn't conform.
And that was exist, that was pre-existing?
Right. That's pre-existing.
That, because it was back in the fifties.
Right. The footprint of that, even when we did, I did the garage over, but the, the, the foundation of it stayed exactly the same.
Right.
Right. And that's, that's fine. It's grandfathered. That's fine.
Yeah.
That can stay the way that it is. And I'm just going out, I'm not going towards the in-law apartment, not the house. So if you carried that back straight, by the time you got to the other end, because it does taper that line, does...
Yeah.
You would be somewhere, I think around, about eight or nine feet. Yeah, somewhere around there.
Actually, if you look at that, you're going to be six point two, so you'd be a five-feet difference. So you'd be about, yeah, eight feet. Eight, eight and nine feet. Eight, nine feet.
So is the, is there...
Eight feet is more palatable than one point three.
Yeah, the one point three, I'll tell you, I don't think this board...
That's less than that.
Yeah, it's less than this.
Right.
You know? So if you think about it, you know, from a neighbor's perspective, I mean, I don't, I, I understand what these guys are saying, but the, the, the building inspector didn't call that out, and quite honestly, I didn't look at the plan. For me, it's the, it's the, you know, the, the variance or the, the distance, yeah, between you and your neighbor's property line. I mean, that's awfully close, and I, and I'll have to say, you know, with chairperson, I've been on the line time, I don't remember something like one point three.
No. We had one case down to, down at Lake Shirley, where somebody wanted to be in, and we didn't...
Well, they changed.
They changed the whole plan, based on firewall and all of that.
And there has been someone else that bought a lot and they built on the lot that they sold, and essentially, they had to tear the building down, years after the fact.
So is there, is there a, a specific number for a setback that your folks would...
Well, the, the, the bylaw is fifteen feet.
I know. And, and I know I'm not going to be able to, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm here for the variance.
If you stayed in line with your garage...
Right. I'd be comfortable.
Which, because that exists, that's there. You already, you know, have a wall there. If you continued that wall down, and like I say, what'd you say it would end up, eight?
It's about eight feet.
It's only because the property line is angled, so, but I mean, if you stayed on that...
It tapers.
Exactly.
Right. But it would also give relief to the height, because now you would, eight plus five is thirteen.
Right.
Okay? Which is, which comes out of a lot, and your height, total height was what?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
So that gives us some relief in the area to go a little bit. And I don't know what the board is going to decide, that's up to them.
Because my main issue for pushing it further that way is one of the second-floor bedroom windows.
Mm-huh.
And it's, where we're at is, is, is close. I, I could look into the option also of potentially moving that upstairs window. Where it sits now is just past the center point. If we could move that window in that bedroom, even another couple feet, to help.
So, so the, so the other option would be use it, utilizing the existing garage area as part of this unit?
We did look at that option as a second...
And putting a garage on, and, and putting a garage in front, and, you know, so putting a garage in front, using the existing garage as part of this, and then going back from there. So you kind of avoid a little, a lot of that...
But that still doesn't help with the, with the width issue. That's going to help this way, where I already have plenty of room in the back, right?
Well, it's going to help in the, in the width ish, in the width issue, as you already started using some of, some of the size of it is going to be that existing garage. So you're using that as part of this unit, and then going back from there. So you're not, it doesn't, you know, if you're doing the same square foot, square footage, you wouldn't have to be, it would be more of a longer, narrow, more like a shotgun than what you, the way you have it set, have it set up.
Yeah. I'd just rather not come more forward.
So, so it would only be, the only more forward would be if you wanted another garage for yourself? A new garage for yourself?
Yeah, I'd rather not. I'd rather just...
Where you are.
Right.
Okay.
Can you open up the public discussion, too?
Not, not yet. We're still debating here.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm, I think I said by piece, one point three feet is too close.
And one other, one other point, that if, if we did that, then you wouldn't need the firewall, because you'd be on the five foot.
So is that, that's the number for the firewall, is the five, five foot?
Five feet.
That's correct.
The building inspector can verify that, but I believe it's five feet.
Isn't a firewall just double five eights, fire code? It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay. And with that, is there any more questions for the applicant while he's there?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. And with that, I will open it up to public discussion, for anybody that would like to comment, in favor or against. Please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, say whatever you would like.
Hi, my name's Herlunda Lindsay. I live at one fifty-four Lancaster, which is, I am the abutto that you're referring to. And the main question I have is, looking at the plot, I have, well, I won't ask him, but I guess I have to ask you. There's a small, small white fence, and I'm wondering, is that the property line, or is, is the new building going to be the one point three feet right beside that little fence? Or is his property line over a bit?
Okay.
That was one question.
Yeah?
The other question was, in referring to that property line, I had planted a tree there a number of years ago, and it's getting a good size, so I'm wondering, is that tree going to have to go? If that building is where it's proposed on the request?
All right.
If, if it's moved, then I guess it won't matter, because the tree will probably be fine and, my house is, my house is set back, so it's not really going to be right in my face. I have a small garage there.
I saw the garage, yeah.
That, that's, you know, I have no objection to the building of the addition, but I just wanted to clarify the fence line in the situation for the tree.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah.
I wondered about the tree, too.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Mendoza, one sixty and one sixty-two Lancaster Avenue. Herlunda is sort of the buffer between our properties and Mr. Tapley's property. I basically have just a couple of questions. We're also not particularly opposed to the, the proposal. I'm assuming that auxiliary au pair in-law apartments are not allowed in RA zoning district as it is?
They, they are allowed.
They are allowed.
Yeah, they are allowed, yeah.
I just wasn't sure. Again, you know, like, like you said, and looking to the future, you know, being in the same neck of the woods, you, you know, never know what, what might come along. I do know that experience I had in the past, working in real estate, that second kitchen in certain towns, in certain areas, makes a big, big, big difference in whether a property is classified as a single-family or a multifamily. My personal feeling about Lunenburg, I don't think that that would adversely impact anybody's property values, you know, in the neighborhood if it was an auxiliary unit. I might like to do that myself sometime in the future. One, one other question I had, I took a look at the, you know, the maps available on the assessor's plan in relation to where the garage is, and it looks like it's about thirty feet from the lot line where Herlunda's garage is located. Do you guys have that? Is that accurate? I'm just curious for...
We don't, we don't have that part of that.
Have that.
No.
My feeling is that the fence is in from the property line.
Okay.
I've, I've basically been there since seventy-three, so pretty familiar with the whole area.
It's like it's thirteen point two feet from the back corner of the garage to the property.
To the property line.
To the property line.
That's his garage to the property line.
I was talking about like her garage, just trying to, just so that everybody could get an idea.
Nice to see where that is on the plan.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that might be something to, to facilitate a discussion. So if the, if the auxiliary apartment is allowed, that's one question answered. The other thing, just as, as two thoughts, first of all, I had his grandmother in school, tough teacher, loved her. One thing that the Tapleys might consider, when we built our house, we were actually looking at a thirty-by-thirty footprint, was the original plan, and the, Beyond Basics also did our plan, and he suggested to us that we move toward a twenty-four-by-thirty-six footprint for cost savings, moving into eight-foot lengths of everything. That was the only other thought that I had. But I think basically, you know, if it can be worked out in a way that's, that's acceptable to everybody, we're basically in favor of whatever it is that they need to do. I'm a big believer in, within whatever reason possible, letting homeowners do what they need to do to maximally get use out of their property. One point three sounds really close, but if that's what it needed to be, you know, we've got, we're not the abutto, so that's not really our choice, so. And the septic would be tied into town sewer, yes?
Right.
That's what he's stating, yeah.
So, I think that's all I had to say.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I will cut off public discussion.
Would Bill like to respond to?
Oh, yeah, well, we're going to ask him to respond.
Thank you.
To the fence and the tree, put a justice to the board.
And Mr. Mendoza for, I wasn't sure where you were going to go when my grandmother had you in school. I know she yelled a lot at me, so.
She was a...
Um, Londa, as far as, as far as the fence goes...
Bill?
Oh, sorry.
They can hear it.
The folks at home could see you. They want to see your picture on TV.
The kids at home say, oh, wow.
I remember being a little kid painting that fence. Luckily, I, I think I only had to paint one side of it, but I can, where we just had the lot lines done, I can, Londa and I can look at that and verify that fence is, as far as the tree goes...
So you're not sure where the fence is with the property line?
Like I said, we just had the, the lot done. I believe that the fence is, is pretty much right on the line. And as far as the, as far as the tree goes, I'm willing to move that or do anything that she would want if this were to go forward.
Is the tree right on the line? Where is the tree?
The tree, the tree that I, oh, the apple tree, that, I believe, is on, is on her, her side.
Close to the fence.
Right on the fence, yep. They're right, the fence is right.
So if you basically...
I was thinking, there's a couple other trees.
Yeah, the front, yeah, the big one.
Oh.
Just so we're clear on which tree we're talking.
There are a cou, there are a few.
It's not an apple tree, it's that one that, you know, the branches break a little bit. It, it, there was a big elm there and I put, that died, and I put this, but the tree's on my property, I'm pretty sure, and I don't care where the fence goes. I was just trying to get a sense if the fence was the property line, so I could gauge how far or close the building would be.
Okay. So I think what he's saying is it's on the property.
The fence is within a couple inches, it's pretty much right on the line.
Okay, so, I don't care if, if it goes, that wasn't my concern, it was, I just wanted to have a visual in my brain of where the line actually was, so when the house was just one foot away, I could, you know, get a picture in my head.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay. That will bring it back to the board, discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, would, could we entertain some, a, giving the applicant a chance, based on our discussion, to give a chance to update her, his plans, based on our discussion? Without prejudice?
I think we can, because I tell you, if we, we can. The way that we would approach it tonight is, we would only, if, if we did it tonight, we're only going to act on what is sitting before us.
Yes.
Which is the side yard and the height. I'm not so sure that he isn't going to be asked to come back here for accessory housing and apartment, whatever, based on the plan.
Right, I mean, we can't re-engineer his plans, but we are meeting in two weeks, if he wanted to come up with another set of drawings that gets them off the side yard a little bit more, and perhaps that might be the way to go.
We, yeah, we could do, we could have him do that, we could continue it, so he could just come back. Or we could act on this tonight and, and just act on what's before us.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think we should just, I think we should continue it, give him the opportunity to come back. Listen, what he does in his space, I don't care.
Right.
Building inspector didn't call that out, the building inspector's calling out the property line.
Right, I agree, that's why I say, that's what we're going to stick to.
They just built themselves a master bedroom, so the kids each get their own bedroom.
Whatever they do inside there is their own business, as long as the building inspector says that we don't, I mean, what's before us? I mean, if he can, if he could go more along the garage line and go out that way, and it's eight feet, I don't really have an issue with it.
Right.
The height's not an issue.
I, I was going to say, because based on your, based on the discussion you're hearing, that's why we're, we're, you know, that's how we're discussing. So we're going to ask you how you would like to do it.
There, there are actually three options, continue, continue with the meeting as requested, continue, continue the meeting to some date in the future, whether it's two, four, six weeks, or to withdraw without prejudice, which means that everything is just folded up, you go away, and you have the right to come back and basically start over.
So what I gather, if I'm correct.
You have the decision.
Adjusting that setback is the sticking point, and if I am willing to work on getting it to the, is, is five feet?
Well, flush with the edge of the garage, you're going to bring that mine straight back.
Yeah, it should end up somewhere in the vicinity of eight feet. Now, I'm not going to speak to the rest of the board, I do not know, but I can tell you right now that if, if I was voting tonight on 1.3, I would, I would not allow it, personally.
Okay.
And if two people go no, and you're done for two years.
What the rest of the board does, I don't know.
Right, so, right, that's, so if you let us vote now, and it turns out it's a no, you're done for two years.
So.
So if I can make some adjustments on the plan, and get it roughly on that line, getting us to that approximate eight foot off the property line.
That would leave, you would leave, and I, I still can't promise, because I can't speak for the board.
I'm not asking, right.
But.
And then two weeks, did you say approx, two weeks?
Yeah, we're meeting again in two weeks. We have only one meeting, so we could probably fit that in in two weeks' time.
If I can get the.
If you can get the plans done in two weeks, right.
Right, just.
If you want more time, you can go with a month.
Right, it's your choice of whether you want to be here then, or when, when you're, when you're ready. We're ready when you're ready, in other words.
Guess what I'd like to do is rework those plans to get my setback further back in the approximate area we discussed. I would like to try to have that ready for the two weeks, if not, then in four weeks.
Okay, yeah, because we could, we'll schedule it for two weeks to a date certain, which is this next hearing, which is, there's only one at 7, right?
7, yeah, it could be 7:30.
So we could schedule it at 7:30, and I think that is on the.
27th.
27th, at 7:30, and by any reason, if you're not ready, we'll just continue again. Which would be.
You can just talk to Lisa and tell her you won't be ready, and then, you know, go from there, so, if you're not going to be. If you are, come on back.
Okay.
Okay.
You satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, I would ask for a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion that we continue to two weeks at 7:30.
27th at 7:30?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
We shall see you back on the 27th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Do we have anything else before us, Mr. Chairman?
Huh? Yeah, not at this moment, adjourn the hearing, I'd like the motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, this hearing is over. But don't go anywhere.